It is Thursday of eleven, twenty twenty four. I would like to call this meeting of the City Banham Council Finance Committee to order. Would you please take the role?
Uh, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Councilmember Thosby.
Present.
That is it. Thank you.
We've also invited the, uh, due to the subject of the meeting, we've also invited the, uh, the Works Committee to the Council to attend or zoom in with us. I think we have.
And Councilmember Donovan is also attending.
Wonderful. Welcome virtually, Councilmember Donovan. I think you can shine it with the way we're doing it.
Just kind of get yourself mic.
Okay. Joining us today is, uh, Mike Wagner from the sewage treatment plant to deal with, uh, both of the items on our top drawer list, unlike the city engineer and Chuck Shea at the top drawer to discuss finances. Let's first move to request for legislation twenty four seventy three, uh, which is a bond ordinance for the improvement of the TPS system, the terminal pump system at Joint Sewer Treatment Plant. We got, uh, a briefing package so large on this, we couldn't print it and, uh, appreciate the thoroughness of the information that came in. I think we got the report from, uh, study that was done in twenty eighteen. And then the, correct me if I get the year wrong there, twenty eighteen, and then the, the newer study, um, that has followed up since the plant upgraded to twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, uh, reflecting changes, uh, changes in conditions. Uh, so who wants to take away a brief description of the issue we're having and, uh, the suggested improvements and how those have changed up? Elliot?
Sure.
Are you? Go ahead.
Um, thanks for having me. Basically, since the COVID pandemic, flushable wipes and alcohol wipes use has exploded. Process at terminal pump station is channel grinders. And basically they just grind things up as they come into terminal pump station and then.
This is not that different than, it's like a meat grinder in your kitchen, right? It's grinding it up into a slurriest like.
Well, it's a smaller particulate matter. Unfortunately, the flushable wipes are very flexible, so they don't always completely chew up and they get wrapped around our grinders. I think I had a couple of pictures that you could see of the result of that. The.
Pretty gnarly.
So, once a month, we send at least two mechanics down to raise that thing. It weighs probably in the order of three thousand pounds. Bring it up and they have to pull those out by hand. It's exposes the, uh, mechanics and the personnel to hypodermic needles, razor blades, anything that comes into the sewage plant. So, as a result of this, it goes into the wet well and is pumped about a mile and a half up to our facility, directly to fine screens and the fine screens have holes that are about six millimeters. And as you can imagine, they clog up pretty quickly. That causes us to open a bypass gate of which, at the moment, it's open right now. We're doing thirty million gallons, but part of our weather operating plan is to open that gate to keep those screens from blinding. Because when the screen's blind, that water then goes out the door onto the ground. If it touches the ground, then we have a night alert. And that's considered a spill. The D E C can levy fines on those.
Now, the, uh, the current grinders are how old?
Well, one of them is about two years old and the other one is probably four, four years old.
So the twenty eighteen report was to replace the grinders essentially with a newer model of grinder, I believe, right? That was the original suggestion before.
They replaced them both, but one came in and then the other one came in and was put into service. The explosion of the wipes has been our biggest impact, significant impact lately. It's, it's unbelievable how many wipes come into the plant now. When I first started here, our biggest concern was cart that would get in from the river process. Now, flushable wipes, and as you can see, they just, they will not go away. It gets stuck on everything. We just had operators down or mechanics down at TPS removing this material from the check valve on the low side of the pump. We have a D E C permit that tells us we have got to pump sixty million gallons at minimum. And our pumps are struggling trying to do that. What we're finding is these rags are wrapping around the shafts of the check valve and closing the check valves partially, reducing the amount of flow and efficiency, wired water efficiency we get out of our pumps. It's a huge problem. Once we open that bypass gate, all of that, this material then can go into the brand new equipment, the secondary treatment and tertiary treatment, uh, and it wraps around our U V and, you know, potentially, there is a potential for it to go to the river, but we've never seen it get that far. The nozzles are only two mil through the deck in the new equipment. And there's just no way that this material will get through that and could potentially clog those nozzles and ruin all of our, you know, secondary and tertiary treatment.
So this is a problem on the, from the D E C side.
Right. I was gonna, I was looking at the property. Influent, do you call it, or whatever? It's the incoming soup.
Yes.
But the influent is okay. The influent from the J C side, not so much from the Binghamton side because.
We have these. This type of equipment is called a bar rack or bar screen, if you will. What this does is it has a stainless steel, huge stainless steel chain with some like U H M W plastic type rakes. And that rakes a huge bar rack assembly and it removes almost all of that material, washes it, and then compacts it, which dries it. And then is taken up to landfill. So this is what it looks like when it's dried.
In those dumpsters when they're up there, yeah.
Yeah. So I think everyone knows that the best place to remove, um, waste is at the source. And right now,
Tell me the story here. There's going to be some increased operational costs because you're, you're collecting and transporting solids now from the TPS that you're not, like, like these are generating or not, or?
No, because basically we have to take this material to the landfill when it gets to the plant.
Right, but you're creating a second, you're creating a second location to do that now at the TPS.
Yes, this. This weight will just be transported from TPS versus Benham.
And that doesn't add, you don't say adding a significant labor or, or trucking burden to what you have now?
It's actually going to reduce the amount of labor. If uh, you'll bear with me here, um, the existing maintenance is approximately seven hundred and sixty eight man hours per year with the system that we have now. And the new project, the maintenance, would be about three hundred and sixty four man hours. And that's based on this equipment. If you notice this piece, these pieces of equipment, these were installed in two thousand and eighteen. This picture was taken March twenty first. That's what they look like now versus, you know, a picture of the channel breakers. It's extremely easy to take care of this. It basically takes care of itself.
All right. So the engineering report had mentioned that part of, one of the possible cons was differing level of, of getting to know the operation maintenance of that, but that's probably not, it's, you're doing, you're using that equipment on the Binghamton side already, you know it.
Exactly. The, the beauty also is now we're going to reduce our inventory costs because we can, if we have the same equipment, we can put it at the old plant or at TPS.
Now, uh, so the, the changeover in equipment and process is one part of this. Another part is the structure and housing of the pump station itself, which is going to need some significant revision to handle this new type of equipment. Yes?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you want to work with that perhaps?
Well, basically, the influent gates that are there now and the effluent gates, so picture the screening equipment or the grinding equipment right here in the middle. And on both sides, there are gates. These gates were installed in the mid sixties when terminal pump station was built. The effluent gates are broken. We've got, uh, broken shafts and a broken gearbox on the, I want to call it the west gate. The guys went in, had a confined space entry, went in and did some out of the ordinary repair to this thing to get it to work, bring it up, and then we put slide gates, if you will, in and then have to run some pumps constantly while the guys are in there trying to get this old piece of equipment out. So basically the structural improvements, I'm not a structural engineer. I'm not going to try to tell you the story.
Just as superintendent of the plant, just to, you know, kind of overview.
But from what I understand, there are, there's one structural beam that's going to have to be relocated or modified at the top section. And then a portion of the intermediate floor will be cut out. There'll be some, uh, flowable fill to bring up the bottom level to a workable height that's above the, uh, C S O elevation for C S O number two, I believe it is, in J C across that Gally Station. And there will be some slight, uh, roof modification because there's an HVAC unit up there. That HVAC unit will be moved and then they'll replace the roof section with a removable glass dome like we have at the facility now.
That's not just for aesthetics. You needed to get equipment in, right?
And to get it in. So it makes it a lot easier. The equipment that we have in there right now has to go in through a mandor, that big piece of equipment. So the guys have to put that on some sort of a cart and manhandle that through a door with curbing inside that building. It's extremely dangerous. We're very lucky that we haven't had a work accident. And I think we all know how bad that could be.
Okay. That all sounds wonderful. Now we get to the rub. Chuck, go ahead.
One of the things that I recommend for anyone who tells people is to go see what's down there today and see what the new stuff looks like and see the lighting day and how it works. Elliot can give you all the whirling pictures, but.
We've seen the equipment at the, on the Binghamton side of things. I had been down to, to the actual pump station to look at the old stuff other than pictures and that the engineering report was pretty detailed about how the process works. Did you go to?
Nobody has the time.
Flushable wipe. So now, that all sounds wonderful. Now we come to the rub of the money side of things. So the engineering report, I think, had, had mentioned about four point two to four point million dollars, four point four million dollar figure for this. And what we're looking to bond significantly more than that. So where, where is the jump off? Can we just get a little bit of a general breakdown?
This is what I.
No, I mean, so the, uh, that was the twenty eighteen diagram. No, this was the, the most recent one. I included some of the building modifications too, but that's an engineer's first glance. So I'm just wondering, are we, uh, do we have anything closer to a more concrete number? Are we passing upon with a lot of margin?
Probably passing the balance margin in there because I think, I would think the engineering cost is six fifty something. And the, the cost of the bond has improved all the costs, even though we may not bond for it, but like, we're not going to bond for the engineering cost, but that has to be part of the total project cost.
I did take about seven pages out of that big report, learning page or whatever it was. And this is the cost that they projected then. And it was five point four million for mechanically cleaned bar screens, but in that, that might have
more things. Well, so this, so this is the capital cost, but I don't look at its capital cost now. It's, yeah, four point two in here. And then, uh, they're, they're factoring in operation maintenance cost over the life of the project, capital cost of four point two. So, I mean, I'm just saying, it'd be wonderful if we came close to four point two than six.
You get the four point two and you get the, you get the engineering.
Engineering costs, yes.
You're going, you're going to be at five point two.
Okay.
And then if there's any hip ups in the design or anything.
We never had those, right?
I wish that were true.
Rob, how much should we ask? Could we get six point five million?
Something like that, I think. Uh, that's, it should be.
That's how big this thing is. There's two of them.
I think my question is, uh, is, was there like a risk assessment done on this? But I know this is like, makes you super anxious and it's like your top priority. I think it's, it's justified that you, your attention to this. Uh, and it seems like there is a lot of risk involved with having it stay the way it is currently. Just curious to know if that was.
I don't know if the engineers did a risk assessment.
It's just like, if we're, if we're flirting with more like D E C fines, like you're, you got a ton of, you're going to reduce man hours by half, um, hopefully.
Well, that's, that's, that's there.
There's also.
Cause there.
The other reduction is at the fine screens in the plant.
There's also currently flooding in the building, right? Periodically?
They have floods every time it runs.
Oh.
The entire facility looks like that right there. It gets all on the walls, on light fixtures, everything. There's a reason that you guys probably didn't go down. It's hands. It's nice work. And we have a minimum of two guys that have to go down there everywhere. Now, when that thing breaks, like one of those pictures in there shows you the top end of one. The gears on it are that big, you know, about that thick. It's about this big, this wide. There's like seven different gears in there, drive unit, hydraulic unit. And there are a lot of plates, individual plates in there that all have to come off of the shafts. Depending on what's wrong with it, we either have to replace the shafts, replace those cutter blades and restack them, pack them back in, press bearings out of that head. It, this thing can be down for two weeks, a month, which means that we're only able to have one channel online. The bar racks at the plant have been in operation twenty four seven. They have not been turned off ever since two thousand and eighteen. They have a one horsepower motor on top of the unit.
And that's it.
Never touches the water. That's it. The, there's a four horsepower motor that operates, two archery screws that compacts the material into that nice, dry, lightweight material. When we remove the material at the Benhamton plant, it probably weighs six times more because it's wet. It's completely soaked.
At the Johnson City plant.
Well, we remove it at the Benhamton plant at the fine spring.
Oh, I'm saying, you're saying the material that makes it through from Johnson City is the, the stuff you have to catch now versus what's coming from the Binghamton.
So the weight is going to be a significant way less. When you see my superintendent's report every month, I report how much written screenings go to landfill. That should be significantly less.
Thank you.
And the man hours that are used, we will bring in three or four guys on overtime to clean up this fine screen building in the middle of a storm when everybody's at home underneath the covers. We're in here working, trying to keep a night alert from happening. We do not want anything spilling out onto the ground. So these guys work extremely hard in harsh conditions. They're basically taking a bath in your toilet. I hate to, you know, be so, but that's what it is. When you get in there and you get wet, you're getting wet with toilet water, amongst other things.
Mr. Lake, anything you'd like to add from the city engineering side?
Just that I think that would be a great improvement. I think it would save the city and the village money. It would be a plus all the way around. It would save that new equipment at the plant. And I think that the payback isn't that, that going to be that long. It's, it definitely has a payback. Just in hours and equipment, because the more they keep taking those grinders out and rebuilding when you have almost minimal
So Chuck, you've got some exciting news about how it's paying for this, right?
Yes, having worked with the E F C on this, they are, said they guarantee us anything yet because they did actually miss a deadline, uh, but we're applying for a grant, which is a thirty percent, uh, grant from the state that they will give to the project as a whole, consisting of being a city and village project together, just like the sewer strip of Benham. Okay, now the city project on its own or Johnson City project down there is a combined entity project. So they will give us that, which is estimated to be one point five, two million dollars. Okay? Then on top of that, if we do the financing through E F C, uh, the joint, uh, ownership qualifies for a hardship loan, which means we will get zero percent interest for twenty eight years. With that being said, we also got money from a settlement, uh, a year and a half ago or thereabouts. And that money has to be spent on reducing the debt that was incurred in building the project. Okay? E F C and our bond council have been working with us on this and they're willing to let us take the money to pay for the engineering design because we need to get that started. Okay, they, they only want to fund projects that are ready to go. They, they don't want to say, we'll fund the project for three years.
Right.
That, that's not how they, they work. You got to have a ready set project to go. We have the study done, which I's, uh, entered into and shared with them. And the application for the grant is due by June and they would like to know that we can get this project started soon thereafter. And I believe if we get the engineering work done now, it's going out the bid last week or two weeks ago. Okay, so we'll have that process. We should be able to have an engineering firm, uh, ready to go by June first. Decide to go to council to use that money, part of that seven million dollars that's with the city and the village to go towards, uh, the engineering design. And then when a bond, which I think is two thousand and twenty five, comes up for a callable situation, we'll take that remaining, uh, pay down those bonds and reduce those bonds that have interest on them to reduce your overall cost of the project.
So in layman's terms, and, and, and Mr. Donovan, my, my still on it, uh, when we talked about this briefly the other day, uh, this is like the city on a large municipal level taking, taking, uh, taking advantage of a, uh, no interest offer on a new credit card and swapping on your old credit card essentially.
Very true.
We're, uh, using the, yes, using the, uh, the E F C financing hardship loan. We're swapping debt that we're paying interest on. I don't know what that interest is, but it's actual interest, uh, with debt that we will have zero percent financing on. So it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a good deal, I believe, from that perspective for, uh, for the city as well. I swap them debt, getting lower, or zero interest debt and the T P S system. Mommy, Mike, any questions?
No, I don't. I'm just been listening as I've been driving.
Councilboard?
I don't have any questions at this time. Uh, I'm just listening, just the same. Uh, uh, I guess, uh, it does sound like a good deal and this is very important, so.
I guess, I mean, you've dug in the most on this, I think, of all this.
I don't know. I know there was some like discussion about like the, how much cash you guys are sitting on at the plant. Um, and I know like we're about to talk about that in a minute. That's like, that's off the table for kind of
I think this is the best way to handle this project. I think you're getting six million dollars, five million dollars, whatever the end is, for zero percentage interest for years. I think it's a pretty good situation.
But gentlemen, what happens, what, what happens with the influent when the project is going on?
So there's two channels.
So you can, you do half, half and half. Okay. So you're going to be in a constant state of your, like, bad scenario for.
Simply put, they will have to make game four.
Mark, is that possible to re-uh, that D E C grant?
That's what we're doing.
Oh, that, okay.
It's, it's a D E C, E F C, right? Uh, E F C is part of D E C, so.
All right, just aggregate it to the top there.
The top guy at D E C oversees it.
Okay, okay.
Yes. Yes.
Sorry.
This is pretty typical at sewer treatment plants that, you know, they will have to keep the flow going.
Uh, I, I do have one question. Wh- wh- why did we miss the deadline the last time?
We didn't have a seeker done by the time June first will run, it didn't happen until June fifteenth, I think, or June fourteenth.
So, and who takes, who, who takes lead agency on this?
The city's taking it over right now. We, we, there should be legislation that goes through that's making us the lead agency to take on all this.
Oh, and I, I just, just since this is finance, and I asked this already, when the Binghamton side of the Binghamton side equivalent, this was done, of course, was jointly shared by Binghamton and Johnson City. So now it's perfectly fair that Binghamton is picking up costs for this side, for J C side.
Because it is considered part of the plan.
Right. I think I'm satisfied at the moment. Anybody else? That's my question.
So just to clarify, Johnson City's not paying, wouldn't be paying for it.
They're, they're paying for their share.
There's.
Forty-two point eight percent, I think, or forty-three-two, I think forty-two point eight. We're, we're paying fifty-four point two or fifty-four point eight.
We're waiting for all of our, we'll get their share back.
So therefore it is not under they have a little more, are they dealing this simultaneously? Do we know, or they're, they're a little bit more, they have a little more time since we're doing the full.
They're going to look at this on the sixteenth next Tuesday.
Okay.
They, they have a little bit more work to get a bond done. Okay, the bond has to be approved before June fourteenth, and they're going to be looking at June first.
Okay.
It's getting there. EFC won't look at it if all the financing isn't. If, if everything isn't, all the eyes aren't down, if he's crossed, doesn't go any further.
We're ready to move on to the next item. Everyone all right? Uh, next item is a request for legislation twenty-four to seventy-six. State prepayment municipalities for credits based on the twenty twenty-two final estimated flows. At eighty-five percent of the estimated final flows, the amount of four million sixteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and ninety-nine cents, could have rounded that up, huh? Uh, with the remainder to be paid upon ratification by the sewer board bill. So Elliot, you're sitting on some of our money. Tell us. So who wants to take it?
I'll take this.
Okay. Elliot just keeps the flow going.
Every year, we do an estimate of what everyone has to pay during the year for sewer treatment costs. And every municipality pays a quarterly. At the end of each year, we do a reconciliation of what was spent, what revenue came in, what flows came in, and how much everybody used to recalculate that, okay? At this point in time, it looks like it's going to be between four point five and four point seven million dollars being refunded to all the users.
This is for twenty twenty-three costs. So we are in April of twenty twenty-four, and we do not know about the final bill is for twenty twenty-three yet.
We do not know the exact bill, correct? That, as I can tell you, it's between four point five and four point seven. But even with that, the sewer board does not approve it till the audit gets done in September. Okay? So in September, after they get the final audit, they'll go through an approval and send back the money to the municipalities, which will happen at sometime October, November. So in the city's case and the village's case, we paid that in January, February, March of twenty-three and wouldn't see this money back until November of twenty-four. Okay, most of this money that came that is right here, there's probably about a billion dollars of what I call that they over budgeted out. There's probably three million dollars part of the settlement money that came in. Okay, that's part of what they, what I mean by settlement, I mean that settlement. They paid the lawyer bills, we put that money in their hands. And we reimburse them, so that's what a lot of this money is coming back from.
Okay, so the, the net effect right now on a city is that, that city is whole, is, has essentially fronted money for attorney's fees and things, and in addition to the normal yearly overpayment. So we have a large amount that is due back to us, larger than normal. And that's causing
cash flow issues.
Cash flow issues, or at least accounting issues as far as states.
Well, it's actually for a variety of reasons. I mean, us going four months, four months late, this being held out for so long, it causes a cash flow issue, which we have to borrow money from the general fund to pay the sewer bills.
Oh, that seems like a shame. So what are we doing?
So what if, what we're, what I'm requesting here is that we do a prepayment of that four point five to four point seven, which is four million sixteen thousand dollars, and run it through the final bill the way it is today, and give back to people if they want the money or credit towards our next quarterly bill. Uh, and then we would net that out against the final bill in September, October time period. So in the case of the city, if the city's supposed to get two point five back, and we get two million back, we'll only see five hundred thousand in October, November, not the whole two point five.
And I just said sewer board, you've been negotiating with sewer board, and they are.
This is what they, they passed this on Tuesday, right?
And so now now, now, now I see the owner, so we're, we're, St. Binghamton Council and Johnson City Village Board. You know, when they're acting on this, hopefully Tuesday.
Hopefully Tuesday.
And we'll have it on our, hopefully next business meeting. Okay.
And basically, this is eighty-five percent of what we think the total amount is that's going to come back.
Questions, Councilor Porter? Councilor Duncan? Councilor Porter, if you're still there, anybody?
I don't have any questions. I'm just listening, trying to understand it all, so.
Sure. So I understand the amount won't be so high going forward, but is this something we want to make? Possibly consider making a yearly standard practice, so that money is not sitting with the sewer board?
I would make it, I would make it a standard practice, depending on what the amount is. I, I think you should kind of say that it's a million dollars, and just throw a million dollars on. We would see a half million dollars, but anything say over, I'll let you guys decide, but anything over a million dollars, we have a prepayment to it. It's on there if it's a million, maybe not four, if you want to do a half million dollars.
I mean, I know you're not the sewer board sitting here, but, or Billy, but is that something the sewer might have an issue with, you think, Chris?
You shouldn't.
So it just seems like would make everything a little more streamlined.
We know that that money has to be returned sooner or later, okay?
So I think that's something for us to consider for somehow making a permanent annual transaction, yeah. But for now, I think we'll get to kind of this meeting.
But I think every single municipality could use cash in the sewer fund. I mean, over the years, with all the projects being added to it, I know from the city state, I think we got the rates of it pretty stable, okay? I hope most of the other communities have, but I always get a lot of phone calls from August and September for money.
And the other thing is, when it happens too late, it's past their budget time. So they really need this to know that it's in your budget, and they don't have to charge their users more. So it's a benefit for everybody. And on the passwork in all the towns they didn't know what, they didn't know what they were getting back.
And they had. They couldn't account, they couldn't, yes.
So then they would budget the whole amount to their users. Next year, we will find out. This would really help for budgets. And your budget?
Yeah, absolutely. I actually have an idea of what's going on in the real, but necessarily know what their budget looks like going forward, but I have an idea where this one stands. So I try to communicate to the municipalities and communities.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. I, I'll be signed over these act about this meeting, I.
Well, I do have a question.
Yes. Sorry.
What would be the reason for the urgency for receiving this money?
For, well, I mean, the most important reason on the city side of the thing is we have a loan between the general fund and the sewer fund, and being able to pay part of that back will take some meat off of us and reporting information to the state. We will show that we've made a payment, reducing the amount that's on the books. From Johnson City's side, their financial statement ends in, I believe, May, so they'll have the cash on their books, which has always been a problem with their financial statement is they have a lot of receivables but no cash. So we'll help their financial picture, according to the state, according to their bond agencies.
Let's still be basically us not, because we'd be in debt to the bond, right? Is that what, what you're telling me?
It will, will help them recording to the, are, are you?
Well, basically, what I'm asking is, if you, what you're saying, if I'm trying to understand correctly, what you're saying is, is that to, in order for Johnson City to make, to make it look equal to the amount of what Johnson City is doing, is, is that the reason why, to make sure we have the money in, in for that?
No.
Okay.
I mean, so it, it, it's money that we pay to the sewer treatment plant that we know we're going to get a significant chunk back by the end of the year. It's useful for Binghamton right now to get it back, so we can help reconcile this, this loan that we've kind of made ourselves between the general fund and the sewer fund. It's useful to Johnson City because they actually need cash in their accounts on their books sooner than we do because of when their fiscal year ends. And then presumably the other municipalities that are using the plant, you know, also, you know, would appreciate money back in their, you know, in their funds, in their funding. It, it's sort of I mean, it's, this is, you, you know, it's, it's money owed back to municipalities, and it's not doing any good, anybody any good, sitting under the sewer treatment plant account, right? So.
Also, basically, it's to make our books look balanced. For the, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's so like in the, in the, in the city's case, the city has basically put out and fronted money for expenses for the sewer treatment plant that, that we haven't been reimbursed for yet. You know, that money is just sitting there. There's really no reason for it to sit there until October or November. We can help, we can help make our books write faster.
Okay. Okay.
And the treatment plant knows it comes back to municipalities, so they are not benefiting from it either.
Right. Thank you. I just was wondering. Thank you. Thank you.
So since we have Chuck here, the next thing was just following up on any further questions?
Okay, no problem. Yeah, absolutely.
Coming over this side of the table?
We're here.
All right. So awkward, that just.
Weird talking in the line.
Uh, we had our, our first attempt at, at reporting some in progress, kind of sort of real time, well, not quite, at least recent financial data from Chuck at the work session, and that's the way to find some meeting today. We had some time for council members to digest the reports a little bit, and Chuck is here, have any questions we want to bring to him, any, any? So I'll start with the fact that the, I think the question forefront of some of the other council members' minds is the, you know, the ARPA dollars that were, we thought we had some things left in the pot here, and we don't, and we are showing negative number right now. And from a very basic, very man off the street sort of point of view, there was this amount of ARPA dollars, and every time something got every time someone's putting a bill, every time someone's allocated, it was, we started with forty-seven million dollars, minus this, minus this, minus this. And when you ended up below that, it seemed like a pretty on the face of it, a very like elementary, becoming, to say that we have a negative balance. Now, that's not the whole story.
If you look at the top sheet, which is the allocation, okay? And I, I gotta refresh you, this is not money that's been spent. There's a difference between money being spent and allocations, okay? If it's been allocated, it's not in our system. It's all being kept on a spreadsheet by myself until we actually enter a contract. So when you see those numbers there that are being allocated, it was a negative number, okay? But down below is the lost revenue, and up in the top section, you'll see about fourteen million dollars worth of lost revenue. My intention was to take some of that lost revenue back, okay? And if you go to the reports that I sent you on March fourth, okay, you would see that negative seven hundred, and I think you would have saw a one point one million, which looked like a positive four hundred thousand.
Yes.
Okay? Not a positive one point eight, because you're taking the minus the seven hundred, plus the one point one. When I would cut and paste that, and I still haven't quite figured this out, I have a huge worksheet with, I reportedly report on it, the best things together, but I cut and paste it. Somehow or another, that went to a negative number, that those last two numbers of that lost revenue somehow got confused, and then I haven't quite figured it out. And the real number is it should have been a six hundred, not a one point one, okay?
When I went back and looked at it, that was weird, because I was just like, wait, this.
It didn't say six hundred.
Yeah, yeah, it didn't. And then I was just like, I don't know, I couldn't figure out like what, where that number was generated.
Yeah, this was like one point one. Yeah, these two numbers here somehow seems over here.
Yeah. Yeah. It's that, that's the, that's the margin.
Right, and I'm not sure exactly what happened between these. If you see how it takes, the one from two, three point, I don't know, one point one, which is the minus.
Yeah.
I don't know what it did.
Yeah, and I was just looking at the bottom number.
PDF file.
Right, but I, I mean, council, every time they allocated something the last twenty-one, twenty-two, the last three years, you know, you had, you knew what we were getting, and you subtracted to below that amount. Which doesn't seem to be a smart thing to do. You can anticipate the fact, if you know that somebody's line is not going to get fully spent. But you can't count on that, right? That's not how we normally budget things.
You know, a lot of things are estimates, okay? We're estimating, you're going to spend this much money on this, you're going to estimate that. And I'm not going to make, deny that I made a mistake on this thing that this happened, okay? But it's, there's money there to take you back from.
Right.
And I, I understand. What's an important aspect, listening to that thing last night, we did not overspend. This is not units. This is a spreadsheet, and this is why I don't want to release things until you double, triple check stuff, okay? It's a working document.
And I, I, we're all cognizant of that, and it's, but.
So when will you have the final report?
At the end of, uh, the end of April, I'll file everything with the state.
So I think what we were.
What I'm saying is there is no money to allocate out.
Yes, we got that point. We got, I, I heard you correctly when you say, well, there's no money to allocate out. I'm just wondering, how come, how did we get here in overspending?
We haven't overspent.
We've over allocated.
We've over.
The previous councils over allocated.
Over the, okay, the previous council over allocated, okay.
We contributed to that with the.
With the hundred thousand. But I, I'll take the total blame on us, and like I said, I know there's money coming back, okay? I, I know where there's things that have to come out of it. Example being, we may have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for one position, we only spend any time, those are coming back.
So I think, I would like to see, and I think I'm likely, our council expects it to be. Right, so I think, I would like to see, and I think I might be a council of excellence, would be a, a report. This ARPA report with the what, what money has been spent, what has actually been spent and what is left in which, which project. You know, down to the fact, I mean, the uh, you know, just trying to answer the, the mayor announced the grant from, you know, youth program line, which doesn't exist as a line in our budget. And it turns out it's a, money that was already given to the community foundation and they're as a sub recipient giving it out. So it'd be kind of nice to know what that's been spent on or how much they're still sitting. So I, I think that's
case right there, six point two, I'd send like, let's say it's a half million dollars. We have to ask them how they spent, I sent them the whole thing. Other places I haven't sent everything.
And I, and I, and for the writing is there, is there historically been reporting back on that sort of thing?
In some cases, yes, give you an example like the Montel Street item, I'm not giving them money, they're giving me reimbursements as they spend it.
They're giving you their receipts and your.
Yes, they're kind of chance. So everything's a little bit different and how we handle it. I mean, I'm not saying they don't deserve it, but you do, I mean, they go through the whole thing. It's not as simple as just giving you a report.
I understand and I understand these are projects in many cases that are still going.
Yes.
But it would be nice to have a snapshot of where they are at, if possible.
Yes.
And not at the end of May.
It won't be the end of May, it's, I will have, between now and the end of this month, I have to have all the ARPA done for the third quarter and if A U N's done, okay? Once that gets done, I can start putting some of this, I, I've sort of pulling some of the data together. Like I have to go pull all the purchase orders we have out there, everything that we have and called them. Pull that stuff out this week and that's, there's just a lot of data that has to come together.
Um, and I, again, I, I, I think we all appreciate that this, these reports are works in progress.
Would you, would you have that data in time for, for by the end of this month?
Then by the end of this month, can we get a more comprehensive ARPA report basically? Hopefully by your first meeting in the, in May.
If I can give you some other numbers before then, I will.
Okay.
Yeah, but this, in this case, there was absolutely a difference between what we, we thought we were working with and what we are working with.
That's one calculation.
I know, I, I, that's, you know, sure, it's a significant part of it, but all right. So that was my bit. Anyone else have?
What I'm saying here, so when you see number here, it's twelve point four nine four loss revenue, that came down here.
Correct, I, I saw that.
I can take it back out of here and move it back up here. That was my intention all right along. Because this has less controls than this does.
Right, right. Yes, more, more flexibility for the cities, yes, which is why I moved. Other questions, council people?
So the thing that I, I was thinking of that isn't in this is I, I'm, I'm interested in knowing more about the city's debt. And like where that's held, how much is it, like how much, like what is the limit? Because there's like, I think that would be really helpful with like when we're being asked upon something. It's like, I feel like it's like, I don't, relative to what, like, we were just talking about six million dollars, like it's, it's hard for me to
say how much you're getting.
Yeah. Figure how much is there and it's just like, we should, oh, there, look at this. You just carry it around.
This isn't exactly what they're asking for, but let's go through this and we'll go through it real quick here. So this is a list of, of, so you can understand this, a global summary of where we stand on medical insurance for this year.
Good thing, and what page you on with looking at this?
Something he just brought down.
So this, this just shows you how many employees and how many members we have in the plant and what our medical cost is. Our X being pharmaceutical, our total costs is for each year going back from fifteen months, this is only for the first two months. Second page on the backside of that will show you month by month, how that money is spent, going back.
I'm sending it in the signal channel, Robbie.
The next uh, report is a report of the sales tax. Okay, so you can see all the sales tax going back to two thousand and ten. And we'll receive anything for this year again. Should be getting that within the first, uh, I'd say by the twenty eighth of May, we should know what that is. But that top line where it says budget, that's how much we budgeted for this year.
Which is uh, which is six hundred thousand dollars less than you got actually received last year. So you give yourself a little cushion, yes.
It's one thing that I have never let any of the mayors who just go over us about the sales day. Because if you overestimate a revenue number, nothing but bad things to happen. Can't get it back unless you start cutting stuff. I've been very conservative about that. I've had it all the way through. But I just want to put this together so you can see that. The next page, what you're looking for. So this is an application that I just filed, finally got it approved. This is our sewer exclusion, so our total debt, I believe, around two hundred, maybe one eighty five. Of that, one hundred thirty five thousand.
Same.
And the largest part of that one hundred thirty five million is sewer treatment plant.
So if this one thirty five, this water sewer, but the majority of it is sewer.
Yes. Tuna, how much was it?
It's four hundred now, when we first started, it was a hundred billion plus like. We got about a hundred million dollars of grants. I'll give you, I want to think it's a hundred eighty five million altogether as, as of the end of the year, I do have that, I thought it was on the street board.
Is there?
Real quick, is that a hundred and eighty five mil or just a hundred eighty five thou?
Five million.
Yeah. And then is that, so that's over, that's, there's a number of bonds for that that have varying interest rates, I assume? Because it's like, this is good to go back thirty years maybe or not.
Every bond that we've had, I believe, has been refunded in the last five years. I think starting in two thousand and fifteen, started refunding all the bonds. I think the oldest one we got out there in two thousand and fifteen, we did eyes. And what we just did, thinking about this, we just closed the ban today, okay? And that interest rate for one year is three point seven five percent. It actually came in at four percent, they gave us a premium that brought it down to three point seven five percent.
And what's most of our long term debt?
Most of the sewer plants probably two percent or less, okay? The other stuff will range for
I, I, and what, and what does bond council project going forward in our currently coven environment?
Well, it isn't bond council that really is, this is, it's called, it's called fiscal advisors.
Oh, yes.
They just stated to be going down, okay?
Already, really?
Well, when I buy treasuries every single month, okay? And right now, the four month, speaking off the top of my head here, let's just say the number's five percent. I think it's five and four, but for the next four months, it's the same number. And then it starts going down, six months and twelve months, it's down below five, it's in the fours. But talking to the treasury guys, they said they don't want to make any decisions that happens.
It's all politics. Yeah.
If, I think uh,
We, we just, yeah, yeah, but this is important, I think. We did this ban this year, normally we send it out and we do a lowest bidder wins. So everybody turns, move to five bidders, so send in the thing that say three point seven five, three point eight, the low bidder wins, okay? This year we did it a little bit different, it costs us roughly six thousand dollars more to do. But we put out the bid and let's say they had put in their things at eleven o'clock today, okay? At eleven o'clock, we, don't say who, okay? I shouldn't say, we say who the lowest bidder is, so they know their amount. Nobody else really knows that, okay? And then they keep bidding down, okay? And
It's a live auction essentially.
It's a live auction, so then every, and it keeps going until no one else is bidding, okay? So it went on for about twenty five minutes of people bidding on it and brought that cost down to forty three thousand dollars of interest. For six thousand dollars, we saved forty three thousand dollars in interest, which was about thirty six, thirty seven thousand dollars savings since then. And if we just put the bid out first. And the initial firm that bid on it, they didn't go first and then a second bid, they went down to the little bit, didn't move from there. But they came with the best numbers, other guys got down to the finals and said this is.
That's a, I guess that's a new practice.
It was a brand new practice, so they tried to see how it would work.
Great job seeking out innovative practices to say.
Well, it comes from our fiscal guys.
Right.
Folks? Any questions?
None. None for me.
None?
I, I don't know what, what it might, might have or not, but I, I have nothing at this time.
I still have a question with the ARPA funds. So there hasn't been any funds this entire year, right? Funds available to allocate?
That's probably correct.
We just found out about this a couple of days ago. I just, I'm just curious.
You guys did, okay? Now, you weren't here, I sent this report out back in March, okay? I did it real quick, okay? And nobody asked me any questions on it.
Okay.
Okay. When, when, when you guys, here, here's what I think everyone needs to understand is I have millions of things on my fingertips every day. I can't guess what you guys want, okay? I can't read everyone's mind, you guys, that's why I have an open ball. You guys phone my office, you call me, I'll get you what you need. It's not like we're trying to hide anything here, it is an open book.
I'm just, I'm just curious how, like, I mean, these are all, like, these are all, I mean, anyone could have access to these, right? Everything that's been allocated? If, if it was requested?
Yes, if you wanted to know something, I could go pull it up. It's not like, it's not, not everything is in our software, okay? The allocation study, you know, spreadsheet, that's a moving spreadsheet for me to put the data together.
Supreme, yeah, so anyone in council could have obtained everything that's been allocated with the ARPA funds.
Yes.
Before this.
Yes.
Okay.
And I mean, we did, we got that, or we got.
We asked for it in March and that's what I sent it to you.
And then that was when, I think we were, you know, Salvation Army thing, which was kind of the last time hanging over, process for that started last year.
I'm going to say it's like crazy in my office right now, understatement, right? Being there, everyone just trying to keep everything afloat, there's a lot of activity in that office at this time of the year.
Well, and then uh, for the, for the debt, like, I know there's like a maximum that we talked about before.
What is, what was it?
Debt limit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know about that.
Come on.
I don't do it every day, but I know the number, it's probably, after today, it's probably about eighty percent. We have to let the bar, all this year's buying and stuff.
Which is a little uncomfortable. Part of what you're working on is getting TPS excluded. Help with that to tune up several percent.
A fair number to look at, it's probably a hundred thou, a hundred million being the debt limit, so every million dollars, one percent. But that's, that's not exactly.
Don't have any more questions at the moment, uh, please, we're going to have more detailed ARPA reports for us. I'll be happier people will be. I oh, I'm sorry, Chuck.
Another thing for you, just want to give you data that I have readily available. This is a
We'll get you a tax levy from before we were born.
So this is tax levy going back to nineteen eighty three. You can see the increases or decreases uh, each year. Then you back page is this good? I can use the rest of it. Cut off on two thousand seventeen, I'll send you out the rest of it. You can see what our increase was, what the exclusions for the tax limit and what the constitutional tax margins were. Just as a, the text, constitutional tax margin, when it gets to ninety five percent, from what I understand, this is when the state comes in.
In the last few years?
Right now, we're down to seventy five. We're pretty high up there for a while. There's many things that affect that, right? Example being debt limit helps it, leases hurt. This is something you guys want, this is something you guys, this is something you guys should learn. It's easier to sit in my office, I could show it to you. And I'm going to be blunt honest, uh, not, uh, last two sets of councils, not everybody came up. But there were some guys that, sort of like you, they want to understand it and they spent time in my office to understand it. And I think it helps you as a council person understand, you know, why we do what we do. There's a lot of movement pieces, you know, you do this, it affects this, it hurts that.
Yes.
All right. If we have any other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So, okay, all in favor? Thank you, adjourn. Thank you, everybody.